Good evening, welcome to the City Canyon City Planning Commission Regular Meeting, Wednesday, August 22, 2018. I now call this meeting to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Cindy, will you please call roll?
Chairman Maloney?
Here.
Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Harmon?
Commissioner Ledoux?
Here.
Commissioner Schirato?
Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I'd ask for approval of minutes from the June 27, 2018 Planning Commission. Can I please have a motion and a second to approve those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
June 27?
From June 27, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Second?
Second.
Commissioner Smith? Cindy, please call roll.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Ledoux?
Aye.
Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mulready, the first item on our agenda, there's a continuance request. Do I need to open the public hearing anyway?
You should open the public hearing and then ask for a motion to continue.
Including the verbiage?
Including the verbiage.
Okay, item 4A, public hearing. Special review use 400 A and B Barrett Avenue, Child Care Center in R2 Zone. I am going to open this public hearing, the provisions of the City Municipal Code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of Canyon City incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim. At this time, there's a continuation request, so I'd ask for a motion that we continue this special review use to the Wednesday, October 24, 6:00 PM meeting.
I can do that. I move to continue the public hearing for consideration of a special review use on a childcare center at 400 A and B Barrett Avenue to a date certain of Wednesday, October 24, 2018 at 6:00 PM.
All right, a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any questions, discussion? Would you please call roll?
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon? Sorry. Commissioner Ledoux?
Aye.
Commissioner Schirato? Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
The motion pass.
All right, thank you. Oh, before I go any further, can I add to the agenda? Under announcements, Councilman Hammerick has a discussion item, so we'll put that at item number 5B. That's okay?
Okay.
Okay. Item 4A, special review use Washington Elementary School at 606 North 9th Street Elementary and Secondary Schools, Colleges and Universities in an R2 Zone. Looks like we have applicants here. I'd like to open this public hearing, case number SRU 2018-002. The provisions of the City Municipal Code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim. Can we please have a staff report?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This evening, we are here to conduct a public hearing on a request by the Canyon City School District for approval of a special review use, or SRU, associated with the planned replacement for Washington Elementary School. The subject property is a 5.1 acre parcel located at 606 North 9th Street or at the northeast corner of North 9th and College Avenue, and it is zoned R2 medium density residential. Since 1961, the property has been the location of Washington Elementary School. It is accessed primarily off of 9th Street with limited 10th Street access for faculty and facility staff. It has been ideally situated for a school as it is surrounded by residential uses, and it should be noted that any kind of school use in an R2 district is considered a special review use under the zoning. This property has never previously received approval for a school as an SRU at this location. Since original construction ended, Washington Elementary School has been expanded and modified a number of times over the past 57 years. In 2016, the school district conducted a structural and use analysis study on Washington Elementary. The results indicated that rather than investing more money into modifying the existing structure, it would be financially prudent for the school district to construct a replacement school and demolish the existing structure. And you see some examples of why in these pictures here. Each of the individual classrooms has a direct access, and one of the issues that was noted in this facilities report was the proliferation of accesses causes a security concern. You can also see that the school also has solar panels mounted on the roof. This was a building whose roof was never really designed to have that kind of weight, so there's been a lot of shoring up that's had to be done inside the building. The building has suffered from settling and uneven locations over time, which has caused drainage and leak issues inside the structure. The logistical challenge for the school district is that any new school facility at this location would have to be built before the existing elementary school could be demolished, or the school district would be without that classroom space for the duration of construction. To assist with funding for the design and construction of a new elementary school, the Canyon City School District applied for and received a grant to the Building Excellent Schools Today, or BEST Program, through the State of Colorado. It should be noted that under state law, there is no requirement that school districts comply with local zoning regulations, as there are a number of school districts that overlay several different local government jurisdictions. The BEST grant, however, comes with a requirement that the school district demonstrated has complied with applicable local zoning codes. As previously mentioned, the R2 Zone District, schools of any kind are considered a special review use, which requires public hearings before Planning Commission and Council and adoption of the SRU by ordinance. To facilitate this analysis, the school district provided city staff with a conceptual plan of the design for a replacement school to be constructed before the existing school can be demolished. The concept plan moves the school location further east on the site, solving the logistical problem of where to construct the new school while the old one is still in operation. Students, faculty, staff, and visitors will be directed to two common entrances at the There is a secondary entrance to the site off 10th Street, which would be limited to faculty and staff parking and queue, and a queue for bus drop-off and pickup for students. The conceptual plan is also showing larger, the larger visitor parking area located at the corner of 9th and College, the busiest intersection around the site. It also locates the playground and sports field at the north end of the site. Staff believes that the better design solution when this concept is refined into a site plan ultimately, is to move the visitor parking to the north end of the site and in its place, put the sports field and playground area near the intersection of 9th and College. In other words, reversing what you'd seen previously. The landscaping associated with the sports field will provide a better frame for view into the site from the busiest intersection around the property. Moving the parking lot to the north end of the site would not only encourage an access onto the parking lot off 9th Street in a location which aligns with the existing alley situated between Pine and Floral, it would allow for potential egress out to 10th Street via the existing alleyway. The final design feature staff would encourage as part of the final site design, is a detached sidewalk with tree lawn along the 9th Street frontage of the property, similar to the existing sidewalk and tree lawn along College. Not only would this visually tie the two street frontages together, it would be a safety improvement separating pedestrians from the traveled lanes of the road with a landscape buffer. And with that, regarding the special review request, staff recommends Planning Commission cite the three findings of fact as a certification of Canyon City's jurisdiction to act on the replacement Washington Elementary School special review use. And, staff also recommends, Planning Commission recommend that City Council approve the replacement Washington Elementary School special review use request, subject to the four conditions contained within staff's report. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Present to speak on behalf of this for the school district is Mr. Doug Abernathy.
All right, thanks Patrick. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question, Patrick. I didn't get a chance to go by there. Is that going to be a one-way exit out of that after moving that parking lot over to 10th Street? Because I don't think that alley's big enough for two-way traffic.
There would need to be some alley improvements. We would want to respect the fact that that alley is also providing access to the homes that are north of it, so it may need to be slightly widened to accommodate that, and that is something that we would evaluate as part of a site plan application.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Councilman Hammerick?
Thank you. The, I note, has the school district reviewed these proposed changes?
The school district was aware during the first round of referral that we had these comments, and they said they would be willing to work with us during the design phase at the site plan stage of this. So they are certainly aware, and at this point, they have not let us know that they are opposed to our suggestions.
Will the proposed findings that the commission may act on tonight become binding on the school district?
They will become binding on the school district if council approves this recommendation from Planning Commission.
And, one more question. Has the Police Department and the Fire Protection District reviewed these proposed changes?
Well, they have certainly reviewed the application. I don't know that they are familiar with the staff recommendation at this point. Certainly, engineering has heard these recommendations and they are fine with it.
Okay, I, to me, that is, I would suggest that that is probably something that should happen before the council.
They were sent a referral on this, and they had no comment on the referral.
That's not my point, Patrick. My point is, is that you're proposing changes to site layout, that I believe it would be appropriate for the Fire District and for the Police Department to review those proposed changes, especially if this becomes mandatory for the school district upon council action.
They will certainly get a referral on this when it comes to site plan. The, as I said, they had no comment on this when it was submitted to them for review as a special review use, so because of that, we took that these proposed recommendations would also have no comment.
Okay, I'm not comfortable with that assumption, but that's me.
So could I interject just for a second?
How are you doing?
On the behalf of, for the Fire Department review portion of the process, as part of the building permit application, it'll have to be reviewed by the local fire jurisdiction before we pull our building permit. It'll also go through the state Fire Department and through the state for the building permit, and at that time, we'll get into the detail associated with fire approval. And then also, as part of the design process, we'll come back with Patrick and meet with the Police Department when we have a little more concrete solution for the design, and we'll review the site plan and strategies at that point during the design process. So, it's a little, it's a little bit early in the process, but there is some checks and balances throughout the design and the permitting process that will allow for review of those things.
Thank you for that input.
You bet.
For the record, can you let us know your name? State your name?
I'm sorry, Doug Abernathy with RTA Architects in Colorado Springs, Colorado.
Okay, thank you. And it looks like you have a presentation as well?
Not so much a presentation, but George and I have a few comments.
I'm George Welsh, Superintendent of Schools, and I'm going to, I trust Doug a lot here and going to allow him to talk about what can, what we feel like we can and can't do. And certainly, at first glance of the recommendations, I don't see problems trying to work that out going forward. You know, the issue of binding and such, I suppose, if it just turns out some things can't be done for various reasons, we would like to be able to come back and have conversations. What I want to do is sort of set the table about a timeline situation wherein, you guys might recall last November, we passed a bond election to be able to sell bonds for a match for a grant. This is a total $26 million project, thereabouts, and the community's paying 6.2 million for it, so it's a pretty good deal. The bond was contingent on us securing a BEST grant, which we applied for, submitted in late February, we got awarded in mid-May. And this particular project is different from the Canyon City Middle School project in that participating in the BEST COP, Certificate of Participation, bond sale, we have to be ready to sell our bonds come the end of November. We got to control the timing and the sale of our bonds for Canyon City Middle School because it was a cash grant. Those are just the BEST regulations. We're going to be in a big pool of COP sales at the end of November this year, and so we basically got information, maybe the first week of June, that we needed to square away our zoning situation, and we immediately reached out to the city, and they've been fantastic in terms of their responsiveness. And all I wanted to do to start with, because I don't know much more than what I'm telling you, is to let you know that it would be real helpful to us timewise if we have this wrapped up, you know, prior to Thanksgiving, so that we can participate in that sale, so we get our matching dollars, so we can do the project. That's what I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you, George.
Let me talk just a little bit about the process, then, just so that you understand where we are from a design solution standpoint. As George indicated, Patrick was, you know, kind enough to go through the process and review this conceptual site plan. So just so you understand, as Patrick laid out, really what we write, what we know right now are the constraints of the existing site. So we know that we have to build an existing, a new building adjacent to an existing building without interrupting the school usage on the site. Beyond that, we know how many square feet we're going to build on the site, we understand our budget at this point. We have not designed anything with either the community or the school, or the teachers, or the students at this school yet. That process actually starts next week, and so we haven't actually even started conceptual design. We put a conceptual site plan together, one for the BEST grant, to prove, sort of proof of concept, that we understand that we can build a building on this site. Beyond that, we really don't have any other solutions at this point. So we are open for discussions around parking and circulation and how the building will operate. We don't, we have an understanding from Patrick and engineering right now about utilities around the site, and we understand the constraints of the utilities around the site, but beyond that, we really don't have any further design solutions than that. So I'm going to talk about a couple of key aspects about just school design in general and the latest practices right now in school design. I've been designing schools for 25 years now, and so I'm going to talk just about some of the basic concepts, and you guys, if you have children, will understand some of these really easily. There are 15 minutes of chaos around a school in the morning and the afternoon, no matter what. Doesn't matter where the school is, doesn't matter how many students are, there is 15 minutes of chaos. Some of that is given by the students being dropped off by parents, some of it is bus traffic. That activity happens at every school, no matter how big or small it is. One of the key things to control that chaos is the separation of buses and parents. Those two things shouldn't be together. If at all possible, we'd like to separate those two things. And so one of the key aspects of this site plan, even though this school right now does not have any bus traffic on it, is one of the things that George asked for is that we plan for future buses that could potentially occur on this site. And so part of that designation was just separating those two elements on the site. Whether this is up further north and this is stay south, not, we haven't solved that problem yet, but at least conceptually, you understand that we're going to try to separate those two uses on the site. The alternate bus that we had shown on the site plan was just for consideration. If it's a consideration that the city would entertain, then it would, something that we would entertain as we move forward in the design. If it did not make sense from a design standpoint because of that alleyway or other restrictions on it, then we could move away from that and eliminate that as an option, but we did put it on the site plan as a potential option, at least conceptually. So, we want to control that separation of those two traffic. The other thing that happens with parent drop-off specifically is that there's a certain amount of stacking, and Patrick mentioned this, there's a certain amount of stacking that occurs when a, when a parent drops off a student like we all have at a school. And that varies, the time that it takes to drop a student off at a school varies a little bit, but it averages about two and a half minutes per student to drop them off by the time they forget their backpack and their jacket and pick that stuff up and get out of the car and close the door, and then they exit the parking lot. And so, one of the things that we'll work closely with the city on is how that circulation works in this parking lot, whether it goes through one access point or goes through two. I know that Patrick had indicated that there was some concern about us using this, but we can work through that from a traffic standpoint, whether it's a ride-in only. But we want to make sure that we have ample stacking so that we can handle students in the parking lot and parents in the parking lot, and we're not backing up traffic on the street. And so we'll work with that to make sure that we ensure that there's no issues with that. If there is additional data that we need to share with either city engineering or with planning, we'll be more than comfortable sharing that information as we go through that process. But, that of course is key to it. The other thing that it becomes key in the design of the school is that if we have a school like this where we have drop-off on one side for parents and on the other side for buses, there's a natural knuckle in the middle where we have the public going in on two sides of the building, and so we have to make sure that we can control it on both sides of that from a safety and security standpoint. And so how we position parking lots and how we position that, that public space in between is really important. Again, I don't know the answer to that right now, because we haven't started designing it, but it's going to be key to that. The other thing that is, that the district has done this summer with these summer projects is safety and security, of course, is a very high priority for the, for the school district and the community, and so locating parking lots in a location so that they are visible from an administration area and from the front door so that you can control what's going on visually at the front door at parking lots is really important. That will also become part of the final design solution that we'll talk about, and so those start to drive a little bit of how we lay out the site plan, just for, just a high level. Is there any questions about those things before I continue a little bit?
Well, I had a question and basically a comment, too. From past years of dropping kids off at Washington and the high school, the concept of moving the parking lot from the corner of 9th and College, I personally think's a better idea. That's a knuckle, any way you cut it, simply because of the timing of the high school drop-off and pickup and the school drop-off. College is just about a rat race traffic.
Okay.
Motivation at that period of time during the day, morning and afternoon, so.
Okay.
It's definitely something to consider on the, on the flow part of that, whether you move, end up moving the parking lot or not.
Okay.
If you've ever tried to drive that stretch during that period, you'll see.
I will make sure I do that here in the next couple of weeks.
Because 9th Street is the other main thoroughfare from north to south of town there, too.
Right.
It's like, like you said, it's like a knuckle sticking out.
Right, right. So, so we'll need to solve that, and we'll work with Patrick and the city engineer to make sure that we solve that appropriately, whether it flips north to south. The other thing that we want to do as we design the building is that playgrounds and playfields are typically adjacent to your larger student bodies, right? So we tend to make those easily accessible for recess and then also for control, visual control and access. So, right now, what we have, and again, we've looked at actually flipping this building, is we have a two-story component of the building on the north side of the site right now, and the majority of the classrooms are up here with playground and playfield around those upper grades. What's shown right now, at least conceptually, the architects had, and not anywhere other than that, is that this was a single story and it was only preschool and kindergarten. And they have dedicated playgrounds associated with that. And so, if we look at flipping the building, which we will absolutely consider, then we want to make sure that the majority of the play area associated with the larger student body is near those classrooms. And we've actually already sketched this based on some of the things that Patrick has shared with us, that we will look at it both ways and flip those things in location. The other thing that we talk about a lot with, with schools now is the proximity of entry and make sure that we have adequate green space around the school, so we create a buffer around the school from a safety and security standpoint and define those edges clearly. So, there's a term out there called natural surveillance, and so if somebody walks up to a site and they can clearly see that this is a school site, and there's a sign that says, hey, this is school property, you need to check in at the front door between these hours, then it starts to create a zone of safety around a school, and it starts to create an easier opportunity for both the school and for the community to monitor that building. And so we want to make sure that we create ample space around the building so that, you know, so that we have some of that safety and security around the building. Again, that was hard to model in that earlier plan, and I, we just did a quick update, just to give you a, if we didn't do anything to the building, and we showed what the parking lot size would probably more appropriately based on what we would really need, it's about this size of parking the church has, and so you can see that parking area could get smaller. And so it gives us the flexibility to look at it in multiple locations if this parking is a little bit smaller. We were doing a diagram early, looked like a lot of asphalt. We're not doing a grocery store here, it's a school, and so that parking lot can get a little bit smaller. It shouldn't be an issue at that point. Those are the big, those are the big issues from a site planning standpoint that we would, that we'll consider as we move forward with the design. The internal workings of the building is yet to be determined, and even the site plan is still yet to be determined, but it gives you an idea of some of the things that we'll consider as we move forward in the design process. And just so you understand, from a design and construction standpoint right now, design will be wrapped up at the beginning of next year, so January, February is when we'll complete the complete construction documents for the building. We'll complete design here in the fall, probably around Thanksgiving, like George indicated. Construction will actually start in the summer of '19, and completion would be the summer of '20.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Are there any questions of the applicant from the commission? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any additional comments or questions from the audience? Please state your name.
Who am I? Dina Zvetla, Community Development Director. Thanks, Doug, for that overview and some of the comments. I think it's also important to note, not only is there, you know, bus traffic coming into a school site and the vehicular traffic via parent drop-off, but there's also folks on foot, right? And hopefully, we can actually encourage the kiddos to have more people walking to school. And with that, folks that know that, that magic intersection also know that that's where the crossing guards are at 9th and College, and so you have a lot of students crossing on foot at that location and trying to get to the front door. And so maybe some considerations of how they're going to get from once they get on to the school site block and getting to that front door and maybe not crossing that parent drop-off traffic, I think would be a good consideration from a safety standpoint. And I do like hearing that you're exploring the idea of potentially flipping and having the two-story component up along College. You know, we understand, obviously, the restrictions in terms of the existing footprint of the building and where it needs to be from a, from a timing standpoint, but, you know, that intersection of College and 9th is really the 100% corner, right? That's the key corner where, in an ideal situation, we would love to see that building. So I think if, knowing that we could potentially get a two- So, I think if, knowing that we could potentially get a two-story component, at least closer to college, you know, if Ninth and College is the 100% intersection, and College is maybe sort of the number-two street, having even more of a presence of a civic building that we know is going to be there for another 50 years plus, I think would be a great opportunity.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Okay. Before I close the public hearing, any questions of staff or the applicant? Okay, now close this public hearing. Doesn't sound like we have any further discussion. It's quiet. Okay, so now, we need a motion based on the findings of fact, and a second, please.
All right, let's do the findings, findings of fact, I guess. Findings of fact, the City of Canyon City Planning Commission has found that, subject to the conditions of approval described in the staff report dated August 22, 2018, the following three findings required by 1724-030A have been satisfied in that the proposed SRU for the replacement Washington Elementary School at 606 North Washington Street A complies with all requirements imposed by this chapter and with all applicable written rules and by the Planning Commission. B is consistent with the purposes of this title as declared in Section 17.04.020, and C is designed to be compatible with the surrounding land uses and the area of its location. Number two, adequate public notice as required by the City or Canyon City Municipal Code has been provided, and three, Planning Commission has conducted a public hearing on the proposed SRU, providing adequate opportunity to concerned citizens to speak in favor or against the proposed revisions.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Smith, any further discussion? Jerry, Cindy, please call roll.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, and secondly, we need to, a motion and a second to make this recommendation to City Council.
Before we
Yes.
get to that point, I just, I'd like to say, I would prefer that that not be binding for, as we move forward. The design team and the city should sit down, of course, and hash out the design, but anything we do here tonight, I would recommend that we not make binding.
Do we need to make a note that this is all subject to the site plan application?
I would amend the proposed motion to say, these are to be explored as part of the site plan application rather than to be compulsory.
Commissioner Smith, do you mind amending your motion to add?
As far as findings in fact, to be explored, to...
This would be on the second motion regarding the four conditions of approval.
Four conditions, I see three.
Oh, are you talking about, we're adding this to the recommendation to the council?
We're modifying the recommendation on the actual SRU. This is the second motion.
Okay. So, I need a motion and a second for the recommendation to City Council with the amendment as discussed. Anyone?
Can you state the amendment again, Patrick?
The proposed language would read, "I move the City of Canyon City Planning Commission recommend that the City Council for the City of Canyon City approve the replacement Washington Elementary School special review use with the four conditions being explored as part of the site plan."
That sounds good. I can't write that fast.
There.
You can just say, as he stated, so you don't have to write it out and state it all again, if that's easier.
Yeah, I move that, as Patrick stated,
That's good.
as his amendment, to be explored and presented to the City Council, is that correct?
That's good.
Okay, thank you.
Got it.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Is everything crystal clear? Cindy, please call roll.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you guys for showing up, and thank you for that presentation, and good luck.
It was hidden in that sack of...
I'm going to have to sort of bring it back.
All righty, item number five, A, Historic Preservation Discussion Item, Becoming a Certified Local Government. We have a presentation from our Economic Development Director, Ryan. How are you doing?
I'm doing well. Thank you for having me tonight. Good evening. Tonight, we're here to discuss the Certified Local Government Program. Back in early May, both myself and some other city staff and council members, we went and kind of did a road trip to some other communities and talked to Buena Vista and Salida about some of the things that have worked for them. And one of the programs that they're utilizing and really communities all across the state are utilizing is the Certified Local Government Program. And this program is designed to be a tool to help with local preservation efforts. It's designed to give both state and federal tax credits to property owners and developers to help them with some of the costs in dealing with some of these older buildings and really trying to preserve the history within the community. The Economic Development Office did a downtown survey, trying to get an idea of what the consumers thought of downtown and what the biggest assets to downtown were. And what we got back resoundingly was our buildings and our history. And, you know, trying to find ways to make it easier to preserve these buildings is extremely important from an economic development standpoint. These tools are out there, communities are using them. We just want to make sure that property owners have this tool in their belt and it's available to them if they want to use it. So, what I'm looking for tonight is a recommendation to City Council to move forward with this program. We wanted to bring it before Planning Commission because there are some planning zoning elements that might come before the Planning Commission. But again, so, the program is for historically contributing properties, for state and federal tax credits. There is grant funding available to the Certified Local Governments. The state actually has to, you know, a certain portion of the funds they get from the feds, they have to allocate for these grants to assist and technical assistance and things like that. And, you know, it also aligns with the preservation goals of the Colorado Main Street Program, and it can potentially increase property values over the lifetime. And I don't know if I mentioned this before, it is available for both commercial and residential properties, and it doesn't necessarily have to be tied to preservation efforts. You know, with some residential properties, there are other improvements that could be made to HVAC systems and things like that that would still be qualifying expenses for these types of improvements in preservation. I have a slide deck here from History Colorado, just to kind of give you an idea. There are several different states and even entire counties that have opted in to be Certified Local Governments. The first one was the City of Longmont in 1985. The newest one was City of La Junta. For those of you that don't know me, I was the Economic Development Director in La Junta before I came to Canyon City. This was something that we started there before I left. Obviously, Denver, the smallest CLG is Starkville with population 59. So, all sizes of communities are participating in this program. I mentioned the grant funds that are available to, from History Colorado to the CLG. We can use those to do assessments and putting together the survey and lists and things like that that we need to, to assess the properties and make sure that we have a good idea of which properties are contributing and which aren't. That was one of Mark's slides, I don't know what that one was. Some of the projects here, you'll see, so Newcastle and Garfield County, project cost was $411,000. It was eligible for $123,000 in state tax credits. And so, you know, when you look at some of these numbers, you know, how are individual property owners going to use some of these tax credits? These tax credits are actually saleable. There's a market for them. Their large corporations will actually buy some of these tax credits. So, there's a market for them to help offset some of those costs for preservation. Trinidad, Los Anas County, $1.7 million project, 525,000 tax credits. Grand Imperial Hotel in Silverton, you know, again, $2 million project, 600,000 from state tax credits, 400,000 from federal tax credits. That was half the project cost there, covered by those tax credits. And then, we had Mark Rodman come down, and he actually did a presentation at the Vision Committee for City Council. Happy to take any questions right now, otherwise, just looking for a recommendation to move forward and put this tool in our toolbox.
I have a question. So, when you talk about, there's a lot of misinformation about designating something as a historical site. People, they get, you know, well, now I can't put this kind of window in. So, it's a completely voluntary program.
That's correct. This is a voluntary program. You know, I believe the way the ordinance reads, others can nominate, but the property owner actually has to agree to be nominated and put forward. So, it is, it is, you know, voluntary and, you know, even to the point where, you know, if somebody makes a non-historical change to their property, you know, they can make that decision, and they would actually get kicked off of the registry. So, there are those opportunities there. It is voluntary. Catherine, is there anything else you would add to that?
No, that's correct. Yeah, it's a voluntary program.
Okay. And then, so, I guess that was my only question. Are there any other questions of the commission? So, it sounds like a great idea.
Great.
All right, thanks, Ryan. Oh, yes, sir. Councilman Hammerick.
I do have a couple of questions. One for Catherine, is this, is the proposed ordinance, is that similar to other ordinances that other jurisdictions have passed? Is that pretty much word for word, is that how those work?
Yeah, pretty much. So, the state program and the federal government actually impose guidelines as to what you can allow for in the ordinances. There's a little wiggle room, like the voluntary mandatory thing, but generally, all, most of them look the same. I will say that some communities, they only have the level of the Historic Preservation Commission, it does not go on to City Council, they are the final decision-makers. That's certainly a policy choice for the city to make.
And as we have it now, this, it does go, this new commission would have their decisions reviewed by City Council.
Correct, they'd be your recommending body.
Yes, recommending body.
There is, I'm sorry, Councilman Hammerick, there is one change that we are going to propose in the ordinance, and that's taking the commission from seven members down to five.
Thank you. Thanks for that information. Ryan, has, have the new owners of the St. Cloud Hotel seen any of this, of this information? Are they, are they aware that the city may be trying to do something here?
Yeah, we've spoken to them about, you know, some of our efforts in preservation. They, you know, have a history of restoring historic buildings, and they're very familiar with these types of programs.
Thank you. And I do have a specific comment on page eight.
Yes.
H says, "Within 30 days of the public hearing, the City Council shall approve," and I would recommend inserting the word "or" after the comma, so it would read, "The City Council shall approve, or modify and approve, or deny the proposed designation."
So, after approve and modify, you're suggesting a comma, do I have that right?
So, after approve and prior...
The first one, yeah. Okay, yeah.
So, that there's, so it's clear, there's three choices.
Sure.
So, this will go to City Council to approve that ordinance, right?
It will.
So, this is a presentation for our benefit. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Added Agenda 5B, Councilman Hammerick has an announcement pertaining to a previous meeting.
And it's kind of information sharing. The Planning Commission did act on and approve the grading subdivision at the last meeting. City Council did review that and approve that also. Subsequent to that, to those, both of those approval, Chief Del Vecchio called me, and he had several concerns about the process. And I'm just going to tell you what his concerns are, and I'll tell you what I think, you know, perhaps needs to happen and what did happen as a result of some of these concerns. But Chief Del Vecchio stated that the impact fees that were referenced in the meeting, both in front of the Planning Commission and the City Council, are not, are not construction fees for hydrant installation. This was relating what he told us, what he told me. And he said that there was, they did get the routing slip, but they were not aware of the issues and concerns and the recommendations that staff were going to make, and he felt that they should have been notified of that. He was also pointed out that both the city and the fire district have fire codes, and that the city has a fire code to enforce, which is supposed to be the mirror of the district fire code. And he also pointed out that the, actually, that the system itself, the system of water pipes and hydrants are not owned by the fire district but are owned by the city. And based on those concerns, there was further action, there was a meeting held with Chief Del Vecchio, and he got together with city staff, there were two city council members present for that discussion, and the city administrator. And the thrust of the meeting was to get an intergovernmental agreement between the two entities so that when issues like this come up, they can, there's already some pre-agreement on who's on who's on first and who owns what and things like that. It turns out that in another venue, that, that the city did acknowledge that they do own the fire hydrants. And so that was, that was kind of contrary to what was told here to the, to the commission. But there was a meeting held, the fire district is going to be drafting an intergovernmental agreement and the, and so the city will review that and they will try to reach resolution on what that agreement should say. One of the things that City Council has had concerns with in the past with staff is when there are proposed things like this that involve either citizens or other agencies or other quasi-governmental agencies, that there needs to be a special effort to reach out, you know, and that not to rely on a publication in the paper for notice to the other agencies about what's going on, but to kind of go above and beyond that. Staff has been doing really good on that and they have done, they have done really well there. This, however, is a place where the, probably there could have been better communication with the fire chief before this, came before this group for approval because there, there was, there was difference of opinion between the two sides about what the facts were. And that was not really brought out in front of this group. But it's on the way to resolution, I feel. And I just wanted to share, give you an update on how that kind of all shook out in my view.
Well, thanks for the update.
Wasn't that kind of what we discussed, was that there needed to be more communication? So it was, it's a win-win because there is communication?
Yes, there is.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. So better late than never, welcome to Cindy, to your first Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you.
Fantastic. If there's no other announcements, we are adjourned. Thank you.